Ladies and gentlemen, like welcome everybody here today for our March 1st, 2023 meeting here today. We're here with Energy Rights Solar. They're going to give us a discussion today. Our first item we're going to take care of, we're going to do a moment of silence for Lee Allen. Lee Allen was on the economic development for quite a few years. All right. All right. Energy rights, fellas, y'all all ready?
We sure are.
All right. You can start at any time.
Well, perfect. Well, we're happy to make this as formal or as informal as you all like. First off, we're very thankful for the opportunity to be up here. My name is Skylar Zunk, and previously you have heard from a couple of my colleagues, both Jacob Caricella, who joined our team a few months back, as well as Blake Cox, who co-founded Energy Right with me last year. If it's all right, I would love to introduce myself, share some background. I think that helps kind of inform where we're coming from as an organization, allow Jacob to do the same. But I grew up about 100 miles west of here on Route 360 in Chesterfield County, and born and raised outside of Richmond, Virginia, and have a background in conservative politics, government service, you name it. Before coming into the clean energy space to work on energy right issues, I worked on a campaign for governor in the Republican primary, and prior to that, I worked for President Trump up in Washington DC for a year and a half at the Department of the Interior, where I got to see some energy issues for the very first time. Why don't you go ahead and share your background?
Well, good to see everyone here again. As you guys might have remembered, came last month, spoke in front of you all. My name is Jacob, born and raised in Yorktown, Virginia, a few miles down south from you all, and went to school for political science at James Madison. Some might say it's the best school in the state. I'd say they're correct. But from there, did some work in campaigning and some legislative roles variously through the state government, as well as some international experience as well. But with all that being said, linked up with Skylar and Blake, heard about what they're doing at Energy Right and the mission that they're pursuing, and wanted to be a part of the team and just be engaged in the conversation of what energy looks like at the local level now that we're in the future, 21st century. Thank you very much for having us here today.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. So Blake and I put our heads together last year and founded Energy Right as a nonprofit that can bring a rural and conservative voice to all these clean energy conversations taking place across Virginia. Since then, Governor Yumkins put me on the Solar Energy and Energy Storage Development Authority in Richmond. Very thankful for the opportunity to help out there. But as you all know, solar is a huge topic on the minds of probably every single county with some rural areas across Virginia. Since we launched, we have been together in about 45 different counties across the state. We love engaging at the ordinance level when folks are first considering what solar should look like, what the rules, the ground rules for solar developments, energy storage should be in a given area. We'll also engage and talk with counties as they're pursuing individual projects. That's truly where the rubber meets the road, and we want to make sure that these projects are the best possible. We're not here representing any company. We're not here, like Mr. Barry Hill was before, representing the Department of Energy. We are representing an idea, and we focus all of our education on making sure that these projects are the best neighbors possible. If they're not, if they have problems, if they have community relations issues, if they are eyesores, these projects won't be welcomed into rural Virginia to the extent that they are now. That is our goal, is to help make these projects better and create rules and help communities find projects and develop projects that can be winning issues. If they won't, like counties have in the past, they will shut the door on solar. And we'll talk a little bit about the economics and technology advancements and how we see the energy portfolio diversifying and moving more towards clean energies like solar in the future. But all that is to say, we're very excited to be here. Please stop us at any point if you have any questions. We have all taken a look at the ordinance. We have a letter that we shared with you all in December, specifically calling out some of the decommissioning language. Happy to go into any of that, but I want to be a resource. Please ask us any questions. We've taken a listen at the recording of the call you all, or the meeting you all had with Mr. Barry Hill, and I had a chance to touch base with him in Richmond following that meeting. So we want to be a resource. We want to be long-term partners in every county we take action in. We want to be there before ordinances are talked about, before projects are talking about, are talked about during those processes, and then after. That is what we've dedicated this organization to, and that's what we've set our minds to across Virginia. So if it's all right, I'll kind of do my own little Q and A based on what I heard asked with Mr. Barry Hill a couple of months ago, and if I can answer those questions a little bit more differently, I'd like to. Not necessarily in conflict with anything he says, but just add some more meat to the bones there. Does that sound all right? So one of the good questions that was posed by the board to Mr. Barry Hill is, what's the community benefit to solar? Why should we do it? And I'm going to answer that question to the best of my ability, but also kind of want to lay the groundwork. That's a question that's not typically asked of many other land uses. As a conservative organization, we're talking a whole lot about property rights and have a poster behind me with a couple of quotes from some good Virginians about property rights. Your right to use your land how you see fit, as long as you're not affecting your neighbor. Now, is it going to directly benefit everybody given solar project? Probably not, but it's that landowner's right, we believe, to bring projects forward as long as they're not adversely affecting neighbors. I'm the neighbor to a 400-acre solar project in Chesterfield County that's under development and had the chance to engage with many of my neighbors, to ask questions of the company that brought that proposal forward, and we're able to satisfy a lot of neighbor concerns. But what's the community benefit? I heard one gentleman ask, is it going to lower our electric bills? And I love getting that question, and I hate getting that question. What I am pulling up on the screen right now is a study that we point to. It's done every single year. It's called the Lazard Levelized Cost of Energy. So Lazard, think of it as kind of a think tank. It's, I believe, a consulting organization that does a lot of these longer-term studies, and it measures the cost of a unit of electricity produced by a myriad of different measures. So here you'll see, I'll zoom in a little bit, solar rooftop. You have utility-scale solar, smaller-scale solar, community. You have geothermal and wind in the renewable categories, and then you have conventional, gas, nuclear, coal, and gas combined cycle. This is measuring the cost in dollars, and I believe this was 2021, of how much it costs to produce that unit of electricity and put that electricity onto the grid. And you see, there's an economics case for some renewables. We're seeing billions of dollars invested into Virginia because its renewables are the cheapest way to put a new electron onto the grid. It is not, as we like to say, the Green New Deal, coming into rural Virginia and putting all of these solar projects, in this case, into the ground because of something Washington DC did. Over the last 10 years, the cost to, the cost of a unit of electricity produced by solar has come down 90%. That's huge. That's why we're seeing so much interest in solar energy specifically. You see utility-scale solar here in this range, $28 to $37, and then you'll see, you know, rooftops up here, quite a bit more expensive per unit of electricity, quite a bit more expensive per unit of electricity than utility scale because you're getting those economies of scale. Wind is relatively cheap as well, and you'll see the more traditional forms of electricity at the bottom. We at Energy Right are in all of the above organization, all of the above energy. We want to see as much energy produced right here in Virginia and America as possible, and we're never going to say anything bad about another form of electricity. We just think as clean energies start to come, we should be prepared for them, and we should give them a fair shot. Coming back to the question of will this lower my electricity bills? Not necessarily. I wish we could see a more direct correlation between lower electricity bills and cheaper forms of electricity like utility-scale or community-scale solar. I wish Dominion and the utilities and the co-ops would make that abundantly clear to consumers. It is a pipe dream almost because they have to deal with utility, excuse me, transmission lines and distribution lines, and they have a whole big portfolio of other forms of electricity to diversify the grid. But if you're looking at a large economic scale, per unit, solar is getting cheaper and cheaper as panels become more efficient, as panels become cheaper, and we're starting to see them more at scale. Yes, sir?
So bottom line, and I think I may have been the one that asked of it to electric Citizens in any county are not going to see it reflected on their electric bill.
You know, I don't want to say that because it can get really complicated really quick, but if you had a grid that was sufficiently diversified with more of these cheaper forms and maybe less gas, less nuclear, then it would stand to reason that you would see lower prices.
But with what's being proposed to us from the research that I've done, they're not going to see significant decrease in the bill for two reasons. One, Dominion went up on the rates last year, and they're going to go up on the rates again this year. And that rate there is going to take away any small amount that was going to be put back on their bill, and it was for only low income.
Yeah.
So again, from what I read, 1% of what the facility was proposed to the county would have gone to low income, 1%. So it would have went to like 1,200 people in this county. They would have seen very little to nothing in a reduction of their bill. And I guess what got me on that was the solar company was selling their product, telling everybody that they were going to get a price decrease in their electric bill. We had some older folks in the county really upset because they wanted the solar energy because they wanted a reduction on their electric bill, and at the end of the day, they wouldn't notice any change in their electric bill. I don't like a sales pitch like that coming to the citizens of this county. It's a false hope.
Yeah. I agree with a lot of what you're saying. This is completely new. Very rarely in Virginia history has a Board of Supervisors anywhere voted on energy generation facilities so frequently. I mean, we're in South Side. I'll pull up a map later of everywhere that we are engaged, but there are some gas facilities there that have been cited, and they're, you know, big taxpayers for these areas, and 20 years ago, that was the best possible thing for them to do. But I have to ask, I don't think that they're asking those energy companies, when they're coming in 20 years ago proposing, say, a gas facility, will this lower the rates on our constituents? It might not. It might.
But that's how solar energy is being pitched to our communities.
And it shouldn't be, but I do want to call attention to, if you're going to produce a new electron and build a new power plant, solar is the cheapest way to do it.
And I agree with that.
Huge, huge upfront investment, and the panels, very expensive, permitting process, very expensive, and then it's free fuel for 40 years. So it's a little different, but I completely hear with what you're saying. I just, on a big picture, it's cheaper electrons. That's why it's...
And I understand that, and I fully understand that. And I also understand that at the end of the day, the only one that's going to really benefit from this is the power companies and the landowners. And that's a fact.
Well, the problem is, on your graph, there's only two that continuously produce power in the blue.
Yes, sir.
That's geothermal and wind. Solar, once the sun goes down, doesn't make anymore. You've still got to have the expensive ones to back it up. So does that graph include in the carbon type and nuclear in their calculation?
So...
Because if you're just going on what it costs, but without having the other energy source to back it up when you have less than 100% efficiency, whatever that is, on your solar?
So I think you're giving wind too much credit. It produces electricity when the wind blows, and none of it doesn't.
I understand that. Maybe go to Washington DC and Richmond, you have a lot of energy, but anyway.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying.
You're right. Yeah.
And also, if you're looking at the investment in wind that Dominion is looking at doing, which you will be seeing that on your bill for Dominion Bill, one of the little, one of those riders they've got. But that's what I want, that graph, does that include the cost of the traditional energy sources when they're not producing?
So this one does not on itself. This is, when these forms of electricity are producing electricity, how much is that costing over the 40-year lifespan? Now, grid operators, in Virginia's case PJM, working in partnership with our utilities, have to keep the grid powered at all times. That is why we think there is currently, right now, a huge need for a very diversified energy portfolio. Now, you hit on in your last meeting with Mr. Barry Hill, you know, the potential for storage to capture solar energy during the daytime and when it's sunny, and then distribute it at night. That's certainly a test case that we're seeing happen a lot more across Virginia as more storage is being deployed.
That's what a lot of homeowners do with their rooftop.
Yes, sir.
They do battery storage at night.
Yes, sir.
And their bill, a lot of times, the only thing they're getting is the generation fee that each company's requiring them to have once they got to...
Yes, sir. Yep, you're exactly right. So, I mean, with Virginia's current energy portfolio, it leans relatively heavy on nuclear, I think about 10 to 20%. Gas is the single largest way we're producing electricity right now, and then probably a handful of percent, four or five percent or so, is being produced by solar at the moment. So it's very, it's got several different sources. It's not extremely diversified because renewables are such a small percentage, but, you know, I would say the median's probably right here, right now, where I'm moving the cursor, probably smack dab in the middle because you have all of these different sources contributing. Solar's different by its very nature. I mean, this will be the first time, to my knowledge, that the county, Northumberland and many others included, will be producing electricity and putting it onto the grid. That's an awesome opportunity. We talk about energy security, energy independence, diversifying the grid. Those are all very important. Several counties can be doing their part to be putting more of this Virginia-made electricity onto the grid. I want to show one more, before I move, folks often ask, is solar only feasible and profitable because of government subsidy? The graph I showed you, and it is up right here, is an unsubsidized analysis. So any subsidies or tax credits that solar is getting are taken out of this. Any subsidies or tax credits that nuclear and gas and coal receive are also taken out of this. So it is an apples-to-apples comparison with this graph.
Your more tax subsidies, they're more in the purchase of electric vehicles, aren't they? They used to have a lot of credits to buy those things.
I don't quite want to, not to my knowledge, I don't know that I completely understand the question.
Well, they used to be, I think, getting up $7,500 tax credit for the purchase of an electric vehicle.
Yes. There's not a program like that for solar. There's what's called an investment tax credit.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
But...
Tax code's even worse than that.
Yes, I couldn't agree more. And if my computer was cooperating a little bit more, I'd want to show you that levelized cost of energy storage as well, but I can come back to that. So just like solar discussions are new to Northumberland, and we have the chance to start producing electricity right here and consuming that electricity at its nearest point of demand on the grid, Virginia on a larger scale, we're piping in or trucking in or training in a whole lot of electricity on a daily basis. This map right here is live. PJM is the grid operator, and I'll call your attention to this negative 3,146 deficit that we're encountering right now. Some days it's 4,000, but on a hourly basis, that is how many more megawatts of electricity that we're consuming than we're creating. So Virginia right now is not energy independent. If you look to some of our neighbors, we're getting quite a bit of energy from North Carolina with a positive surplus of energy produced there, and probably a whole lot, the rest of the deficit from West Virginia, who is mining coal and has coal plants operating and transmitting that electricity via high-power lines into Virginia on a daily basis, hourly basis. This, you know, if we're going to be an energy-independent and energy-secure country, I think every state can do its part to try to be an energy exporter. The more supply we have, and the more, the more cost-effective that supply is, I only see that as a downward pressure on energy costs writ large, and it's also bringing in a whole lot of benefits with energy security and grid stability.
Do those figures, how much do they fluctuate during the day? Is that based upon the normal peak usage?
They fluctuate quite a bit. I'm wishing I could show a line graph of a day or hourly, hourly variance. I can look for that and maybe shoot it to you.
I would assume, I would assume it would be...
Peak time, different, you know, the summer time would be way off the chart.
Well, time of day, too. Your usage during the day versus night and stuff like that.
Yep, and, you know, more traditional forms of electricity, they can turn on the coal plant, they can turn it off. That's typically not very cost-effective. Gas is a flip of a switch. Nuclear, you really can't level up and down. It is a baseline, you know, a baseline supply of whatever they are producing there. So I can, any more questions here, anything we've covered so far? And feel free to pose questions that you've posed to Mr. Barry Hill as well. So we are talking to as many communities, we'll talk to the business community, chambers of commerce, local civic groups, as much as possible to make sure that they know the facts surrounding solar. We want these projects to be good. We want them to be popular. We want them to continue to be welcomed because, yes, it does help the landowner during construction. These things provide quite a bit of jobs, and there is a case to be made for long-term tax benefits as well. I shared with you two articles, one highlighting Charlotte County as a case study, and the other highlighting Halifax County. Now, those two counties don't have a lot in common with Northumberland. They are two counties in South Side that have a whole lot, several different high-tension, high-voltage lines crisscrossing the county, and they're generally more suitable to large-scale solar projects. Both of those counties have cited thousands of acres of projects, and they are seeing the tax benefits of those projects already take effect. At the Charlotte County example, they passed a gigawatt of new projects last year, and they've kept their promises, and they've lowered taxes by, I believe, 10% on their residents via real estate tax breaks. Halifax County, I think, is projecting $35 million over the next 40 years in income. That's huge, and that's great, and those counties are excited about it, and as conservatives, we think that they should either invest in schools, first responders, or give that money back to the citizens who gave it to them in the first place. That probably won't happen in Northumberland because there aren't transmission lines, but these things do produce quite a bit more tax revenue per acre than almost anything else, except for maybe a really heavy industrial use, and they do have the opportunity to add some dollars to the county coffers. Now, I know Northumberland's more suitable for maybe several smaller projects, but I did want to point that out. We get that question, will this benefit me and my electricity bill? Areas in South Side that we work that do have these huge solar payments coming in, we say no, but you should tell your supervisors and your planning commissioners, spend this money wisely. We're a home, host locality to these energy generation facilities. We should see some of those tax breaks. We couldn't agree more. So wanted to mention that and hold that up as an example, but I think we definitely are more likely to see several different smaller projects come for your consideration in Northumberland.
How do they coordinate the solar farms and gardens, or whatever you want to call them, into the comprehensive plan? I know, how does it fit in? My question is, how does it fit in with that comprehensive plan for the county? That's a question that I have. I mean, are we going against anything that we have already in writing?
There's nothing that actually talks about solar, but the basic concept of the plan is to concentrate development in the villages of the county, and it's however y'all want to mold the comprehensive plan, the planning commission. You know, we thought about doing a buffer around the distribution lines and saying, this is kind of where we think it's going to be, and you can put in your comprehensive plan, say, if you have a vision for the future, the total number of acres you want in the county. And it's not, it's not a guidance document, so it's just a general figure. So you can say, we want this much solar total in perpetuity or whatever.
But can a locality actually say that?
Yeah, you can, but it's not, it's just a guidance document.
And how do, with an economic development plan, how does, how does it fit in with that? If you're trying to grow your county and, you know, for some young folks, maybe a deterrent is to come through and look at a solar farm, you know, one of them live next to them. And I mean, that's, I'm not against solar, I just, I like to get this information and want to educate myself on it. You know, another thing is, you know, what are we going to do if we get hit, somebody has a home and it's worth $3 million, and you throw a solar farm to it and they go and put it on the market? And now it's valued at 2.5 million, who's responsible for making up the other $500,000?
Yeah.
And that's a big concern with some of the citizens we have here in the county. They have nice homes, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any difference to me if my home is not that nice. I wouldn't want to lose any money on it.
It was a big topic for my family and my neighbors when they proposed one next to my family's land, but there are several different studies, and we can follow up with them, that essentially make the case, if you have a, what we would call a good, reasonable project that's well buffered, that has decent setbacks off of property lines and has vegetative bufferings to make them almost invisible, there is zero effect, if not a slightly positive effect, on that, those property values. Now, if you have one right next to somebody's house, and there's just a chain link fixed up to their property line, I can understand how that would not be very favorable. However, we've seen some anecdotal examples of folks saying, I'm totally fine being next to this. This use of 100 acres next to my house ensures that it's not developed into a housing development or it's not developed into any other land use that might come with a whole lot of traffic and negative externalities. We ran a poll of all Virginians, and we asked them, we gave them about five different choices. If you had to decide, and I'll pull this up, give me a moment, if you had, if there was going to be a neighboring land use in 100 acres next to your home, what would you prefer it be? Solar facility, a natural gas facility producing energy, a housing development, or an industrial use? I think were the four choices. Well over half of respondents said, I'd prefer to see the solar facility. It's low-impact, it doesn't make noise, it can be invisible if you buffer it well, and, you know, no additional traffic, no additional kids in schools, and it's a, you know, net positive tax generator. Actually, I'd love to walk you through some of this if I can find it, but...
And I know another concern is, it's just like, you know, when they want to present you with a project and it's approved, you know, they go through a honeymoon phase, they're going to do whatever you ask to get the project in and get it up and running. But after that, it appears to be full maintenance, and they... Um, and they, and another issue along with that is, is that they change hands so often. And it appears to be a constant issue for some of the localities that's, that's had solar farms already put in for a while, that they're battling that all the time, you know? And that's, you know, how do you, you know, you want them to be a good neighbor, but how can you make them be a good neighbor when you don't know who your neighbor is?
Yeah, and I know you, you all spoke about that with Mr. Berryhill. In my, now, we're, you know, at maximum, maybe ten years into some of these utility-scale projects and certainly some of them have changed hands, uh, in some cases maybe, uh, more than once, but, um, generally, these projects either end up in Dominion's portfolio and Dominion takes ownership, or they are owned and maintained permanently by a larger energy company that will, um, enter into a power purchase agreement with like, say, an Amazon or Google that really wants clean energy. Um, we're seeing, I think about half of the solar produced in Virginia right now is being consumed by, um, you know, corporate entities, tech companies mostly, that want to consume green energy. Some folks are, you know, before they'll go and site a new facility in an area are asking, does this county have a clean energy portfolio? Um, I, I, I don't think these will continue to be traded. I don't think once Dominion owns a project that they'll ever sell it to anybody else, but certainly they can, um...
But not all of them will be Dominion.
You're right. Some, some are owned by the, um, local electric co-op, some are owned by, you know, the, the same company that developed it, they'll hold it as a long-term asset. Um, I, I don't think it'll, I don't think you'll have a neighboring project that'll change hands several times. Uh, we tend to have not seen that in, in, in many areas. Um, one thing that we'll always support is really strong community outreach from these companies to, yes, the immediate neighbors and then the more wide community and of course, leadership. Um, that's something that we've seen done well in a whole lot of areas and the leaders and the neighbors are very aware of what's going on in a given facility and we've seen some areas where that hasn't been the case. And, um, I'm not sure, I don't remember if that was a element of your ordinance to require community meetings or to require the point of contact of these companies during construction, but that is only ever helpful. I pulled up the poll here, I want to highlight a couple of things. We, we've had this poll, um, in the field, asking Virginians these questions in the month of January. We see a majority, fifty-six percent of all Virginians want more emphasis on solar production. Um, you, you can see the numbers here for other generation sources. Moving on down, um, this one was one that I was happy to see from a property rights standpoint. Ninety-four percent of Virginians agree that landowners should be allowed to build solar projects because they have the right to decide how to use their land and clean energy benefits everyone. We see this in so many areas as a property rights question. The focus should be on how do you minimize concerns of neighbors and control the effects that a given project might have, and I'd like to go into that a little bit more. We, of course, tested the governor's approval rating.
Well, you know, keeping a, putting a project on your land is great, you know, have a bit of problems solved, but the companies maintaining it seems to be the biggest problem. Now, they'll let the grass grow up on the outside and looks like, it just looks terrible or it's inside, you know, they don't want to do any maintenance to it, all they're worried about is the dollars that they're getting. And that makes it, that makes it bad, bad for the, for the residents.
Yeah. I, I mean, again, as a, as a general point, I'd like for you not to be able to see them very much. We want vegetative buffers to be thick and opaque and if you can drive down the road and not know that there's a solar facility in this field, great. That is how the one...
I can, coming down three-sixty in Broadestons Flat, I can see a lot of goats out there.
Sheep, but yes.
Sheep, well, sheep, whatever they are.
And, uh...
Yeah, but I mean, that's certainly not a vegetated buffer at all. You can see animals of that nature out there on a regular basis.
Their vegetative buffer has been very slow growing and I think they've planted a couple of times, the trees have died and I don't know what's going on up there, but it's not what I think it's supposed to be.
So, this is the project in Hanover County?
Yeah.
And folks in Hanover have a lot of words to share about that project?
Yeah.
And I get it. They built that and the county gave them a permit before they realized how important view shed is and how valuable a natural vegetative buffer or a planted one can be when it's installed correctly. And in Hanover County, we're having that discussion, similar to this one we're having today, and they know it's a priority to buffer those from view. Um, we've seen in some areas, it has been possible to plant that buffer before construction starts, at least the perimeter one, let those trees grow up. Um, if there exists a natural, you know, wooded barrier between where that project will be and any roadway or neighbors, keep that there. Maybe plant a little bit more evergreens in that vegetative buffering early. Um, some landowners will still want to timber some of that. You have to kind of balance all these things, but the, the gentleman who has the sheep flock on that site, I actually was with him, uh, last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me, in another county, and, um, that's a really interesting use. We hear a lot about farmland. Um, solar projects are going to take over all of our farmland, we're not going to have anything to eat. That's a little bit hysterical, that's not true with what we've seen, but you have producers like Mr. Bronson on that Hanover site who are creating an agriculture crop, uh, sometimes being paid to put his livestock on that site, and that's a huge way to double-dip on a particular land use and preserve an agricultural use beneath the panels.
Have you, that Broadestons Flat, I remember, I know Richard does, Jim, a few others, that place got inundated, uh, with Agnes or Camille.
Yep.
That's a major flood zone plane and that's a major storm, but we are getting more of these major storms, so that's going to, that can be a major problem right there. That can fry the whole system right there. Because what, one side of the road was completely inundated, the low side, the western, the downside.
Yeah, there was water over a whole, whole lot of that land up there.
So, I mean, that's something, that's the only place I know of that's in basically a flood zone.
Yes, sir. So, I have a couple of different counties, examples of a project on the edge of a flood zone are coming to mind and, um, in some cases, you can put those panels up a little bit higher. Um, in some cases, you, um, you'll have to take a look at that in a given permit, uh, conversation. Um, I'm not aware of the elevation or tendency to flood in that area per se, but, you know, that's a concern, that's something you all should think about. Um, certainly should be something to mention and, and ask a particular developer when they're going forward with a permit. Have you thought about this? What kind of mitigation measures have you put in? Um, and do we expect this to be a, a one-hundred-year flood plain or a five-hundred-year or a fifty-year flood plain? Um, those are all important considerations. I know there are ways to, uh, essentially, a system will shut off if it gets, uh, if, if water comes up to the level of panels, we certainly don't want that to ever happen, but systems can shut themselves off and there are different, um, safety and mitigation members that...
But then your pads and if you had any, uh, battery storage there, that even like that kind of water.
I think you're probably right. I, I don't think that, you know, the batteries are necessarily, um, I, I think they're waterproof. I think that every example I've seen, they're very contained and they don't even like to expose them to air. Um, they're going to try to lock those things down and make them secure as possible. It is in everyone's best interest to see the solar facilities continuously producing electricity and, uh, that these batteries continuing to either put out or take in electricity. Jacob looked at an example in Florida, do you want to talk about that briefly? About the, that neighborhood that...
Oh, the article?
Yeah.
Uh, so they're, they're, yeah, they're, I'd be happy to share with you, but came across an article last week, uh, about a small town, uh, recently built, literally the town built in the last decade in Florida, about twenty miles, uh, north of Fort Myers. Well, during the, the hurricane last year that went, swept the whole Gulf Coast, uh, this is the only town that I've, that I've come across that didn't lose power the entire time during the storm. Which going back to your earlier point with, you know, the concerns with storms, the, the pro of having solar and perhaps storage on top of that and the future would be, um, you know, because you don't have to rely on counties, you know, five, five over from Northumberland for, for electricity, if there's a storm in the western side of the state or in the south side of the state or, or neighboring states, Northumberland could, could theoretically get through a storm, you know, without seeing a storm.
Must have all underground wires, that I can tell you. Because I can tell you, power lines and trees would take down everything if you had a system like that.
Yeah, you're right.
We, we lived through Isabel, so we know that one well.
So, in Isabel, I lost power for ten days, we're in a rural park and, um, we literally had to bribe Dominion workers with donuts to come fix our power lines, I was, when I was growing up.
We had, we had to enter the areas and you had to flag certain things because you had power companies from whichever estate that was doing it.
Yeah, and, uh, one conversation I've had with neighbors is if, if there is a electrical generation facility right next door, there's only about a mile of, of transmission lines to be, uh, impacted between me and that energy generation facility that would cut off our power. And lord knows that will be the most, uh, the, the biggest priority for the utility to fix and to bring back online when it comes time to, um, fix all those problems because that's their generation center. So, i- instead of having, um, one energy generation facility per five counties, you might have ten energy generation facilities per county. It's changing the grid and we, we haven't seen things like that in the past and this hopefully will move us right, in the right direction in the future. So, here, here was that question I was referring to. About sixty percent, fifty, fifty-seven percent would prefer to see a solar project, seven percent, uh, preferred to see an industrial park nearby, thirteen percent a natural gas power plant, twenty-three percent preferred a housing development. Um, just kind of the poll question that we put out there, it's a little different than the one we asked the year prior, but, um, happy to, happy to show this.
Well, then the question is, yeah, that, who would really not want to have that compared to the other choice?
Exactly.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's not a really a great question. Would you rather have the land left unspoiled in farming by itself or in timber versus solar farm? That's the type of question that you need to ask, not, do, would you want a industrial? Who wants to live next to a industrial complex?
Good, good point, the, the...
Unless they're industrial workers.
And certainly we can look at, at, asking that question next year, but I, I think what we wanted to kind of get at is, folks have the complete ability to control what they want to do on their own land. When it comes to a neighbor, you have a little bit less of a say.
A landowner does not have absolute right to do what they want on their land.
They, they can choose to pursue different avenues.
They can pursue, but they're not guaranteed that right. Because the other thing, some things that they do, as, uh, Mr. Brand was talking about, what they do can impact other property owners' rights by, and I'm not talking block and duchy, you, whatever, but, you know, the nuisance property uses, the, uh, you know, in other words, it degrades the value of the property. What about that other property owner or owner's rights, their property values not to be impacted by somebody else's? I mean, that's the challenge that we at local government have to look at, because, you know, that's what happens. It, it is, this person, I, I can do whatever I want on my property.
Yeah.
No, you can't. I mean, that's the whole idea of zoning by itself, it does restrict by its nature.
And planning's important.
You could, zoning does that, to protect property values too.
Correct, and that's why we preface everything we say about property rights is, as long as you're not adversely affecting your neighbor. And it's our experience that solar projects can be good neighbors and we want them to be better neighbors. That's kind of the little niche we've carved out, um, uh, trying to educate and, uh, and talk about, to celebrate the best cases and totally recognize the, the importance of, of local zoning decisions. And you all have the toughest jobs ever. I talked to some of, uh, the elected officials in Richmond and the General Assembly, you guys are deciding the local issues that are very often the most controversial ones that a given county will impact because it's your home. These questions, these permits, in my opinion, should always be decided by you all. Your ordinance should allow good projects to come forward, uh, not overly restrict projects, not lay off individual zones. You all should have the ground rules laid in a comprehensive plan and ordinance and then you should accept applications for consideration, vote yes or no on them. That is the world that we're pushing for. Um, so I, I completely understand your point.
And speaking about the General Assembly, did you want to pull up the budget amendment language?
Yeah, would you text that to me?
It should be, yeah, it should be.
Yeah, you see legislators twice, when they're asking for money, they're asking you for your vote. We have a chance to see people almost every, well, every month, if not more often, not counting daily.
So, um, want to change directions slightly here. Um, there was an article a few days ago about Illinois State. Uh, we've seen similar articles in Ohio, New York as well, um, talking about states taking away local authority. Um, and as you probably respect and realize, when a state will take away local authority, they're never giving it back. Um, in Illinois, very recently, they did just that with renewable energy siting. Uh, they had so many counties putting in these harsh restrictions preventing new projects from being built, uh, that the state got fed up with it and, um, took away localities' rights to even consider this. I never want to see that ever happen in Virginia. That's why I think what we're doing is so important for localities to continue giving these thumbs up and thumbs downs to individual projects fairly. But, this year, we were alarmed and sat in to see, and luckily this was killed, um, this proposal about a study group to review ordinances and re, and look into revoking local siting authority for energy generation projects, uh, both solar wind, small modular, nuclear reactors, batteries. Um, I, I want to highlight this, the task force shall consider and propose alternatives to siting agreements authority, including but not limited to the creation of a state energy siting office, expanded siting authority of the state corporation commission, and by right development. This is bad news. And I, and again, this failed and was, was not passed, uh, was taken out of the budget.
Dave Morrison from Fairfax, you're right.
And, um, it had a Republican cosponsor in the House and that shocked us. We would never like to see an unelected group of bureaucrats in Richmond making local zoning decisions, uh, and, uh, with, with a strike of a pen, giving, uh, particular projects permission in these areas. So there has to be a way for localities, uh, the energy industry companies, and we definitely want to be a part of this conversation to find the best projects in a given area, to allow them to come forward with fair consideration, to give the good ones a thumbs up and to give the bad ones a thumbs down. This is, was kind of a wake-up call for us. It certainly made the case to us, this is, you know, important work that we're focusing on, um, this isn't, this is a reality that we never want to see take place. Uh, and we're telling as many people as we possibly can about this so that they kind of understand where we're coming from and, um, will, will hopefully join us in this conversation.
Who was the host patron?
I believe it was Delegate Davis out of Virginia Beach.
Well, you got to understand, politics and energy don't mean, I mean, party means nothing in energy. Dominion Energy, really known as VEPCO, Henry Howe said, uh, they want to keep the big boys honest, and he was talking about VEPCO. And it makes, that was the Democrat, big Democrat, that Howe and Hendrick. But, Dep, uh, Dominion in particular gives money to whoever helps themselves. And you saw that with that, the last bill that they played with, I mean, they take, they take their own authority, state corporation commission to review their rates on that and they wanted to increase Dominion's rate of return of equity. Then not even counting what they did with the... Then not even counting what they did with the wind cost to us. So, I mean, that's, and regardless which power, what party's in power, they'll agree as both sides of the aisle.
I think you're right. Our point and our mission is to talk about this at local levels where there are, there's literally a change being made and where these projects are real. You know, in Charlotte County, I really enjoy going to Charlotte County and talking with their supervisors from Planning Commission. There are a lot of good folks. But for the first time ever, in Charlotte County history, they voted on about a billion dollars worth of investment in 2022 alone. I mean, it's a big responsibility that these localities have. Again, it's not going to be the case here, it's not going to be the case everywhere, but it's important. And we want to be a resource in all these areas.
So you're referencing articles and different things. I tried finding it before I come here this afternoon, but I had one that was sent to me. And it pretty much started off that the solar projects, it was not the intent to use agricultural land or forest land to develop these solar farms, that it was enough land that the solar farms could go on and not interfere with agricultural import. And it's kind of gotten at hand. And that's a concern, if that's a legitimate order. I can't, I can't find it, I can't remember where it come from. But I did find one, and this is, I guess, summing up some of our concerns is, you know, the solar trash wave, is what they titled it as now. Where's all this stuff going when it's ready to be decommissioned? According to this, and this is from the Harvard Review, that they're really looking at, you know, people want to throw this stuff in the landfill because they're looking at twenty to thirty bucks per solar panel to recycle correctly where you can just take it to the landfill for
Couple bucks, yeah.
And a couple bucks and you're done. And that's, to me, that's an issue. I mean, years ago, the big thing was to bury your gas tanks, your fuel barrels for your farm, your gas stations and what have you underground. That was the best thing. And now we're paying dearly to mediate those projects, to get the tanks dug up, get the soil back where it should be. And what I'm seeing, this is going to be the same thing if we're not careful.
Yeah.
It's not enough rules and regulations that, from what I see, that they've even tried to address any of this yet. All we hear is, oh, you can recycle it. Well, that's going to come at a cost too.
You know, just like Jimmy's talking about these oil tanks now, yeah, that's a big problem now. Just every one of them is leaking. The ones that have them, it's just a ticking time bomb. They pollute the land, the soil, the water supply, it's a big cleanup. And then when you start looking at the amount of acres of farmland that we're losing in Virginia per year, we're losing a hundred and forty, a hundred and four thousand acres per year. That's a lot of farmland to be losing. Population is growing, we need more food production, and you're going to take good farmland and put solar onto it, it doesn't make good sense.
Yeah, so both really good points, and let me take them one by one if that's right. So you asked the same question to Mr. Barry Hill last month about recycling. And I come in from it at the same way you are, I agree. I think that there is an enormous business opportunity in thirty years to recycle these panels or to put them on schools or to put them on government buildings or to resell them because they're still going to be producing electricity in forty years. Huge business opportunity. The single greatest cost for any solar project right now is the panels. That is very often even on small projects, a multimillion dollar investment that a company will make. Now, it might not, say you have five million dollars worth of panels right now, in thirty, forty years, that might be one million dollars worth of panels. There's still value there because they'll still be producing electricity. I want to start talking about an American company called First Solar that does have several awesome studies about the long-term life of these panels. After forty years, they're still seeing eighty, eighty-five percent of the original electricity produced still coming off of a given panel. So there's still value there. I don't think we will see panels landfilled at the end of their useful life because they are still mostly useful for another use. They might not be the best use of that acre out in the field in full direct sunlight, but perhaps on a rooftop, perhaps retrofitted, refurbished, it certainly will have a use. But if they do end up getting recycled, there's a lot of value there. By weight, ninety percent, eighty, ninety percent of a given panel is glass and metal, which we already recycle. That last ten percent, the kind of active ingredients that's doing the photovoltaic work within the panels is going to be a little bit tougher to recycle.
Silver and something.
Say it again.
A little bit of silver and something.
Yep, and copper and you name it. I think in thirty years, it's going to be more cost-effective to take those ingredients, recycle them, pull them apart and make new panels than it will be to go mining for those same materials and some faraway land. I mean, those, it's expensive to make panels, it's going to be useful for a future company to be recycling them.
And I respect what you're saying, but there has yet been a plan put together to address these issues.
And I
I know it's a lot of talk and it's some concerns, but I don't think they've really planned too well for this yet. And I guess another thing that sticks in my mind, it's a gentleman that I know that's a really good businessman and lives here in the community, and his question to me was, if solar energy is so good and safe, why are these solar companies paying all this rent for the land when it'd be cheaper for them to purchase the land? What are, in his question, another question, I mean, what are they scared of at the end of the twenty to thirty years of life? That they don't want ownership of this property.
There are, so I think there are fewer people who would be willing to sell their family's land than they would, than there are who'd be willing to lease it. I, if I own land, that'd be very, very tough for me to sell it. But if I had a nice lease, forty-year kind of timeframe, and I know that would be, you know, mine supplementary income and then my family's being able to pass that down and then being able to use that land after it's decommissioned, I think more folks are willing to do that. There are many examples of companies with purchase options as well. If they get this built, I will purchase it from you for X price that we agree on. But I think the leases are a better deal for the landowner because they get to keep the land at the end of it. And they could farm it again, they could build on it, they could raise trees on it. Mr. Haney, to get to your question about farmland, the hundred four thousand is up four thousand acres from 2021. That's, those are USDA figures measuring the amount of farmland converted out of agricultural use to some other use in a given year. And so if you'll take a look at this state solar highlight right here, we had, it's, so I'm going to use 2021 numbers here, but in 2021, we had about three thousand to four thousand megawatts of solar come online in Virginia. Not all of that was on farmland. Some of it was probably timberland, some of it was probably brownfields. Some of that was probably just unused pasture land, who knows? But if you were to say that every single acre underneath a solar panel that was brought online into 2021 was on farmland, it would still be a very small percentage of that, you know, a hundred thousand acres being converted out of use. It is pertinent and it is front of mind for everybody because solar is new. And you don't really think of farmland loss when you think of a neighborhood being built or some other conversion story from farmland being converted into another use. Solar is a small percentage of that, but it's front of mind and people are thinking about it. But, yeah, you're looking at about five to ten acres per megawatt. And you do the math on that, and I say at maximum, that might be responsible for fifteen, ten, five percent of farmland converted out in any given year. That being said, it's something that folks are thinking, you know, a lot about. And I hate to see farmland converted out of production on any given year, but in 2021, about every single crop metric increased by, you know, five to thirty percent. That's beans, that's corn, that's cotton, that's tobacco, all increasing in net yields in 2021, while Virginia saw a conversion of a hundred thousand acres out of farmland. So I don't see it as a main driver, it's definitely a concern.
But your net yield depends on your weather and rain. And a lot of factors play into that. So, yeah, I mean, you know, if farmers had a good corn crop this year, they might not have a good corn crop next year. And, you know, I'm kindly reminded all the time that farmers feed the world, but it's hard to eat a solar panel. And I get that quite a bit.
And I wouldn't recommend trying to eat one. But, you know, on mass, say we wanted to do the majority of Virginia's grid coming from solar power. The Clean Economy Act that they put into place a number of, a few years ago, check me on some of this math, I believe it's, is it sixteen gigawatts of clean energy? Apologies, it's not coming to the top of mind right now. I believe it's sixteen gigawatts that Virginia has to bring online in like the next thirty years. Say all of those are solar, you're looking at about a hundred sixty-one thousand acres if you are generous and say that ten acres to produce one megawatt. So we're looking at a hundred sixty-one thousand acres across the entire state of Virginia, some of which is already in place, much of which is not on prime farmland that is currently being farmed. When you look at it that way, it's not that much when you consider that in 2021 or 2022, we lost a hundred four thousand acres of farmland converting into some other use. So it's a big statewide macroeconomic problem. But if we only need a hundred sixty-one thousand acres over the next fifteen, twenty years, it's not going to have a huge detrimental impact.
All right, but how can we be sure that solar is the right way to go with the panels that we have today? And our panels have improved in the last ten years. You know, and hopefully they're going to improve even more in the next few years. You know, they can be smaller in size and still produce the same amount. Say you had one that was only two by two, could produce the same amount of energy for a four by four or so. You know, if you can get them down in size like that, that would be better. And even if they could produce more energy and have a longer life. So what's, you know?
Yes, so a lot of folks are saying that if we have this major breakthrough in panel technology in twenty years and it becomes much more profitable to switch those panels out and put new ones in in that nice sunny field that a landowner has permitted for a solar facility, people might really want to do that. And then what happens to the panels that were built in 2023? They're still going to be producing ninety, ninety-five percent of the original amount they were producing. Those are perfect to put on a home, those are perfect to put on a rooftop or another use case. You know, that might happen, but, you know, we didn't not buy a car twenty years ago because it was getting fifteen miles to the gallon. When it became common practice to get a, you know, a truck that could operate at thirty miles to the gallon, we upgraded when it was time for us to do so. We are hopeful that technological advances will continue to happen and use less of a land footprint or produce more electricity on the same land footprint. But I don't necessarily want to be waiting around for twenty years for that to happen. We still have to do things, we still have to produce electricity. And there are private companies wanting to put dollars into these investments because they know they can get a return on it. If they can get a higher return with more effective panels in the future, free market should do its thing. But I also don't want you all to feel like they're, that as supervisors, you all have to pick out the best technological, the best technology, the best energy-producing technology right now. I mean, we're faced with choices. And if the free market thinks that they can turn a profit on a solar generation facility now, they deserve some consideration.
Let's assume when it comes time to commission, we don't have to worry about the recycling issue. Take that one off the table. How does a county protect itself from financial implications? A lot of these companies are LLCs, limited liability. They're limiting themselves. How do we protect ourselves when, like, for example, if I were to do an energy solar farm, I'm sixty-six. Thirty, forty years, I don't expect to be here. I'm then passing that liability for the decommissioning aspect to my daughter or my grandson. But suppose they don't want it? How do we protect that? I don't want other taxpayers to have to pay for decommissioning the solar farm where the landowner has gotten big bucks and what they're going to get is potentially the bill. I mean, that's my very conservative concern, is protecting the taxpayers' dollars who have gotten very little if anything. Like Jimmy brought out, they're not seeing a reduction in their electric bill. How do we protect the others who are not benefiting by this?
You have a utility scale decommissioning ordinance and locally codified financial assurity requirements.
You get a surety bond. Surety bonds can be defunct. Mr. Bates, he used to be in banking, he told me enough times, surety bonds fail. We've had them fail here in this county. What protection? If the state wants to do something, give us a protection for failure of decommissioning the financial piece. That would be the most, if they want development, they've got to give us some of the protection. We're a Dillon Rule state, as you've heard of. We can only do those things that the General Assembly, after we pray down and beg for it, to get. And that's the way it is. Right now, I am so concerned about future liability. I see people who are every locality that I've seen, it's limited life corporation, it's corporation, and then it's being, and Mr. Branch, it's being transferred from XYZ to XYZ. It may come to Dominion, it may not. That's my ultimate concern is. There are other concerns, yeah, we, you know, about the soil erosion, the one in Essex, muddy creek scenario. Terrible situation, but that's the problem, those are other issues. But I have to worry about the bottom line.
I appreciate that. And we heard you ask that question this past August.
Every time I have it.
And again, I'd really encourage the county to make use of the UVA Welding Cooper Center.
That's what raised enough questions. We get that one day before we're considering things. The problem is the new information on our liabilities and concerns keep popping up at the last minute.
That's not, that's not their fault.
I know that, but that's I know.
It was a happy accident that they put out the, their decommissioning best practices a day before you all were voting, I believe this past August. We have tried repeatedly to get the Welding Cooper Center, you know, in front of you all, for you to ask questions directly and on December fifth, pin this letter with them. um to summarize a little bit about how a locality and how a community can be well protected from that. And they receive state dollars to do just this, to study it. And out of the 138 different localities, right here, Northumberland is one of, I believe, the 27 localities to require financial surety, updated relatively frequently. I know you were talking to Mr. Barry Hill, should it be two years, should it be five years? Look at that, make sure that money is increasing over time and make sure that it can also fully decommission a project out of the end of its life.
But we're doing, you're doing an estimate of decommissioning costs in year one right now, for example, or year zero, projecting out to 30 years, and we're not talking recycling, that's off the table. We we can't calculate that.
Yeah.
But how that's my problem is, and we've had like in subdivision roads, you can require cash bonds, you can require surety. If they put all cash up and and the road, then it costs more to put the road in, then the county is liable for it.
On year 25
I don't want the deficiency to be passed on to taxpayers.
On on year 25 of looking at this every five years, it's going to be much clearer of how much it's going to cost on year 30. So I think taking a look at it every five years, having a note on the calendar for staff to make sure and do update an estimate to make sure that these projects can be fully decommissioned with the money that is put up by these companies is incredibly important. If not, they'd be in violation of the ordinance. They would be
And have you are familiar with on enforcing ordinances? Very is not is not as powerful as it used to be. And then when you're dealing with corporations, you can't do a whole lot on a corporation. Worst comes to you're you gotta cease operations. Then we're really stuck with it. I mean, it used to be a class one misdemeanor, 12 months in jail for an individual, but then they did it only 30 days, and then you gotta do all like this.
I would really recommend you all task the county attorney at looking at how to protect the county to the maximum extent. The Welding Cooper Center ranks you all in one of the top echelons of counties uh who have taken a look at decommissioning. Um, and with with all due respect, people have been permitting these projects for about five years and they were thinking about
Nobody has decommissioned them. That's the the problem. We don't have any track record on the end stage of a project. But and again, not talking about the recycling piece.
I guess California is the only one that's probably running into it.
You want to use that as an example?
If you want to use that, that's right.
You're and they've had trouble.
Yeah, they've had a lot of trouble and they're covering it all up.
And what and they got power companies that can't like oh, look what they keep and then Texas got their whole
I think you mentioned a siding agreement. And I and I may have gotten this mixed up, but I I didn't I thought you couldn't have a siding agreement for smaller scale.
If it's less than five megawatts.
There we go.
So and everything so far on our scale and what you're looking at is going to be generally less than five megawatts. So we can't have a siding agreement. It's got to be through conditions.
I remember you all asking Mr. Barry Hill that. I think that that changed in July of 2022 with a new law. Um, I believe that you can do siding agreements on smaller projects, but let me double check that because I think that was a recent change. Because some some counties were saying, I don't want to do anything if I can't tax it. And I think the General Assembly looked at that and said, oh, if if that's really what's happening, then maybe we should allow for siding agreements.
For five megawatts below the the revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing.
But not siding agreements.
Got it. So
So revenue sharing is allowed for under five megawatts.
Got it.
Siding agreements are not allowed to be required for less than five megawatts.
Thank you for that.
It's not can't be required or isn't required, but can we require it? Like, how is that worded?
You have to negotiate with the company. And uh so it's it's not required, but it can be a condition. And if they don't want the conditional use, then they don't have to agree to it. If they want to agree to it, then a condition is not the same as a requirement.
So you're stuck again. So the last word I'll have on decommissioning is, this is important and I'm glad you all are focused on it. It is also important to the landowner. Uh, no landowner wants to be stuck with a a field full of panels and that truly is is uh has not ever been the case. These are very, very valuable projects. They're very well-capitalized LLCs that have millions of dollars worth of solar panels in at in their asset as well as this contract to connect to the grid. All of these things are very, very expensive. Um, I really it it I can't think of an example in Virginia of a company going bankrupt and a a field just being left with antique panels that aren't producing
We haven't gotten to the decommissioning aspect.
Well
And far as capitalization, I can tell you they're probably very uncapitalized, some of them. We've got two applications coming up before the board next month. And they got one LLC and another LLC and the the company SCG or whatever it is. All the addresses come back to the same place, a Maryland corporation. And that's that's what concerns me. When I see it's the same address, it's the same company, it's the same person, but you're doing whatever they can to protect themselves. But how do I protect this county?
With a good ordinance and a very thoughtful application and by asking them these tough questions.
Like say they'll give us a surety bond. And a corporation can go bankrupt. A corporation cannot pay, well, may not want it. It's an elder state corporation. It's got to get business to do business in Virginia. And then if it doesn't pay its corporation fees, if it's required, then they go defunct that way.
With the
I mean, then you're talking to a landowner. The landowner in this case is a corporate entity. We're not talking George Washington or James Madison. This is George Washington Incorporated.
With the vast majority, I I might even venture to say every single solar project that has been developed in a several billion dollar market in Virginia, they have all used that same corporate structure
I understand exactly why.
So that when you're ready to sell a project to Dominion um when an individual developer is, then they can not sell the entire company, but sell the asset to them for them to manage and for them to um, you know, abide by all those permit rules.
And the worst thing of all, if they sell it to Dominion and Dominion's have to spend so much money, then it's going to come back off on us on ratepayers.
That is the story of every, that that is how our grid is powered, is that very system. I mean, that's the that's true with coal sites, that's true with natural gas. Um, they are giving a enormous public service by powering the grid and we are utilizing it, we have to pay for it. So a lot of these are big picture problems. They're, and I wouldn't even call them problems. It's just the way the system works and it it solar is kind of a new use case, but it's very, very similar, um, you know, with traditional fuels as well. Anything from you?
I got one more question.
Yeah, hit me.
How do you, where does your funding come from?
So we have set up our organization as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and um we have invited anybody who is um interested in seeing our work take place um to donate to our organization. So yes, some of those are energy companies.
Well, I can imagine.
We have uh not taken dollars from any utility. Um, but in terms of our board, we have a group of, I'd say, kind of general activists from across Virginia. We have Mr. Jackie Barrett, who's on our board in neighboring Lancaster County. And um that is how we have kind of set up our our organization. Uh, soon, we hope to have an element on our website where you can click to donate and supervisor, I'll I'll email that to you as soon as it's up and running.
Email all you want. It's gonna go into dump and go into file 13, checks in the mail. Because I can tell you Dominion gives money to every, like, so that they uh take them on hunting trips, like Tommy Norman would go on hunting trips and they thought that was good as everything. To tech football games and stuff. So they grease the palms up there. That's why you see the General Assembly doing what they do to the State Corporation Commission.
Well, how, what what other questions do you have and how can we be helpful in the future? We want to be a long-term resource. Uh, we'll leave cards with everybody. If you have any questions, call us up. Where we're really trying to bring value is this field operation where we are talking to folks on a face-to-face basis. Nothing can replace a handshake. And we put in 4,000 miles this past month, traveling across Virginia, having these conversations. Um, please let us know. It's a real honor to be in front of you. When we formed this organization this past summer, um, we couldn't imagine being in this scenario, being able to talk so freely and frankly about these things. If I was in your position, I'd have these questions too, and it's a joy for us to
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Long.
Um, how many do you have on your board? What's the number?
Can I actually introduce you to them?
Do you have any minorities on your board?
You know, we don't yet to my uh
Why is that?
To my knowledge. Well, we probably should. We have, I believe, half women and half men on our board at this point. If you have any ideas, please let us know. Um, we're um very interested in doing so. Um, Mr. Barrett actually recommended Mr. Haney, I believe, who is a landowner and a projecteer. I believe they're friends. He recommended we reach out to him and um something we might do in the future. Um, we're still kind of growing. We're still expanding. Um, you know, our board, I believe we're at five, five at our next board meeting. We have one new one coming on.
Well, you know, I don't think you should do it in the future. I think you should do it now. You know, try to get at least a couple minorities on your board. Uh, that would really help you.
It's a good point. Thank you. And it's a good reminder and um if you have any recommendations, let us know. Right now, we have a couple, uh, two chief of staffs to different delegates. We have a planning commissioner in Southside Virginia, Ms. Kim Wiley. And we have Mr. Jackie Barrett up in Lancaster. And then we have Mr. Ron Butler, who worked on a number of different campaigns on the conservative side in Richmond. So we want it to be geographically diverse. Uh, we have more ladies now than we do have men. And of course, we'd like to have some minorities on our board at some point, too.
I think to add to that, I think, you know, you've got businessmen and and folks that's been in politics. I think you need to have a couple people on your board that's a citizen, that's, you know, kind of have a different blend of folks to go along with that as well.
Yep, I uh couldn't agree more. This is our team, Blake, who you've met previously, Jacob. And um our board is is right here, if it will let me scroll. And Jackie won't send me a a picture of himself, so.
There was a bill in the General Assembly for, I think, VDOT to consider solar panels in the uh public right of way. You know anything about that bill?
I haven't heard of that.
I don't, but there's a good test case in the state of Georgia. I think they call it the innovation corridor where they do just that, you know, in the middle of a cloverleaf, put a couple acres of panels. Um, and uh, you know, solar panels along the roadways, they put on electric vehicle charging stations and are trying to make this one stretch of highway as clean as possible. Georgians love it. I know the governor down in Georgia's celebrated it widely. Um, but I don't know about that specific bill. All all I hear about is how people don't want to see panels. I think they kind of look cool sometimes, but
I was just wondering, if the state turned it down, then what then what does that say to us? If they don't want them in their own property, then what about us? The other perception I have is solar farms are generally in the rural areas. Just like where sludge is dumped. We are getting dumped, literally and figuratively, with many things from that benefit others. Because I mean, we had, you talk about a fun time, sludge was a fun one, too.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And that's even at interest, I mean, Otis Day, you know, DC, even New York and garbage and all like that. I mean, that's some of the concern is, yes, this may put more energy into grid, but it's still then the energy produced here in the Foma County, Lancaster County, since they've got a farms farms operating in West Mullen, they're not powering Richmond. Are they?
I'm I'm not following the question. Did you say
The power that is produced in the northern neck.
Yes, sir.
That's not going to Richmond, is it?
The the power that's produced is going on to the grid and the nearest place that that electron can be used, it is going to be used there.
Yeah, but that's so it's not, it may be gen- it's generated locally, but then their localities are but the Richmond area is not benefiting. They are going to then be supplied either by the one next door to you, since you're close enough. Uh, but they don't have, how many solar farms does Chesapeake have?
Several. Um
Not enough to supply one big subdivision they bring in almost, I bet.
You're probably right. Uh, but if I could encourage you to think about a locality that currently does have a energy generation facility, they think the same way. Why are we having a coal plant in XYZ County to power Northumberland? Why don't they have anything there? That's what we hear all the time is, why do we have to be the host locality to power somewhere else? Well, then you have a place like Northumberland and several on the northern neck that don't have very much energy production, who are beneficiaries of power produced elsewhere. So it is a, these things have never been talked about in the way that they're being talked about now because solar is different, it's more distributed. Uh, you can put them anywhere along the transmission line that has some capacity to tap into. So I hear you on that. Um
But if you don't have transmission lines, you're not doing anything.
That's almost always true.
And we don't have any distribution lines.
Excuse me, distribution. I'm sorry.
And I think with the capacity that we have here in the county, we're going to be limited what solar can come in. Because you can't
You're not going to see big, what we call utility scale projects. It's
What do you what do you consider utility scale in terms of either wattage or acreage or both?
Generally, I would say 50 megawatts. It's 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 it really changes. So we've worked on projects from three or excuse me, seen projects and have worked alongside communities and projects that are as small as three megawatts all the way up to 800. So that 800 is the anchor for a huge utility scale project. And then you have several different smaller ones that are under that five. You typically will see huge 50 to 100, 100 plus as utility scale. Then some people call it community scale or distributed scale, below 50, that can hook up to a distribution line. And then, you know, under five megawatts, I think you'd call them small scale or uh or or community scale. But I would, you know, if you haven't seen a proposal for 50 megawatts, it's because they can't make it economical in Northumberland, and that might be 500 acres. You're going to see a myriad of different small ones. So yes, we should pay attention and make sure that these are all really uh good projects and um the county is well protected, but you're not going to see, you know, a thousand acre field ever come here, knock on wood. But some counties would love to see that. It just it's just probably won't happen here.
Does a solar, uh, a megawatt of solar power generally about five acres?
Five to 10.
Five to 10 acres for one megawatt?
Yes, sir. Say seven is probably a safe number.
Uh, the other concern is the plans that come in are all generated solely by the applicant, either their engineers. Localities like ours don't have the expertise, nothing against their staff, but they're not, you know, PEs. They cannot evaluate that. What do other counties do to evaluate the myriad of stormwater and environmental impacts and all like that to make sure it's a good, you know, water quality and all those things?
I'll just refer back to Mr. Barry Hill's answer. I'll just refer back to Mr. Barry Hill's answer. A lot of times you'll see a county require a developer to put up money for the county to hire an engineer of the county's choosing to look at those plans.
Is there a list of engineers who qualify for that type work, to your knowledge? If they can design them, somebody else can be able to, there's probably a consultant out there somewhere.
I know that there are plenty consultants for you all to pick from, who will happily take your money to look at a proposal.
Well, I understand that.
There are definitely some that we see very often. A lot of Virginia-based civil engineer firms are the ones drawing up these plans. And there are probably just as many firms who'd be willing to review those plans, make sure they're satisfactory. I also think DEQ and Mr. Barry Hill's office can help the county think through those different provisions and make sure that the county is thinking about the right things, asking the right questions on a given proposal.
And on small scale, like, you know, Foman County realistically looking at, the ENS plans, is that done by DEQ? Or is that the threshold big enough for DEQ or is it all done locally? Because I know there was some discussion in the past about that, or legislation, actually.
To, to review the plans?
Yeah.
I think, I want to say there is a way to ask the DEQ to step in and help you and be that third party to review those plans. It's a little bit outside of our wheelhouse. We're never in behind closed-door discussions when we're...
No, but I'm saying example, like the Essex scenario where you had such poor erosion and ENS situation, I know DEQ was involved with that one.
And I'm happy to say we've come so far since those projects have come out. I think last March, DEQ put out a memo essentially requiring solar, putting a whole lot more requirements on solar projects to make sure that the quantity and the quality of water that leave a site is unchanged after construction as before construction. So that's important. That is where we get into neighbors having an impact. Yes, we should control for these and we should not have any adverse impact on a neighbor.
Yeah, that's the memo that interpreted the solar panels themselves as an impervious surface.
You're exactly right. Yes, sir.
Which it is. Doesn't go in.
Well, I don't know. Trying to get an ordinance straight, that has been a difficult project. Very difficult. And you'll see where the solar companies will send their representative there to influence the solar ordinance. They want you to do, they'll give you these ideas that they want and they'll get you to agree to them. Get them in your ordinance, so it only benefits them. It doesn't benefit the county itself. And, you know, we've had that problem here. And I understand that they want to express their point. Now, that's fine, express your point, but don't try to get that into the ordinance just so it benefits you.
I hear you. That's something that we hear all the time. We're working on and are continuously perfecting a, you know, a project standard document or a best practices for given ordinance. Having Mr. Barry Hill come and share his concise thoughts. He is probably the best resource in the entire state. He literally reads ordinances for fun. We met up after his Christmas break and he said he spent the entire time reading every single solar ordinance across the state. I know he posed a lot of questions to you that he wanted clarification on and I know he made a couple of recommendations. Phenomenal resource that wants to engage and be helpful to the counties. It's his state job to do that. Please lean on him. The Welding Cooper Center is a Virginia, UVA think tank that is there to help. It's the Energy Transition Initiative and the Welding Cooper Center for Public Service. They have research assistance, one of whom wrote the entire decommissioning report. And their job is to put together best practices from different counties and try to hash out the best path forward. So I will say some industry voices, some companies have experience and have helped counties literally write an ordinance and then use that ordinance to build their own project. Some of them are good actors. Some of them genuinely want to see good projects come forward. And should you, you know, research everything and consider yourself and consult with your county attorney and other counties, yes. But you are honestly, have you permitted a solar project before? No? You're one of the very, I'd say, few counties in the state who has not done one yet. We are rarely coming across a county that has not permitted a project yet. Most of them have done one five years ago, three years ago, a couple years ago. And you have the benefit of seeing everybody do it before you. And there's a lot of best practices to learn from and that's what we're, in part, trying to share. And other counties can be resources as well.
Well, you know, we need outside help, too. And our staff has done a wonderful job trying to help on this, you know. They do the best they can do, but nobody really knows about solar. And our county attorney doesn't really know solar. We need a, we need someone else that is capable of handling solar, that deals with it on a daily base, basis, that can help us with ordinance.
Couple resources I might recommend is VACO. VACO has taken up the topic of solar many times over the past couple of years. And Mr. Lurch, I believe the attorney with VACO is very well-adapted in ordinance language. I think you could network through VACO to get in touch with county attorneys that have literally cited and helped their counties cite 10, 20, 30 projects. Some county attorneys work for multiple different localities and have a huge amount of expertise. I think those all, those people could answer some solid questions for you all and share some best practices, specifically counties that have cited projects and have seen projects built and have learned from those projects. We're always happy to help introduce folks. You know, I know there are consulting firms that specialize in helping counties and I imagine them to probably come with a price tag, but if the county wanted to do that, that's an option as well. But we've helped several different counties with their ordinance processes, trying to make these projects the best neighbors possible, allow for property rights to be present in those ordinances and allow good projects to come forward. So we can be a resource as well. If you're looking for some other counties that have decent ordinances in place, I'm happy to forward those along to you all. But they might not look like Northumberland County. So you all have to adapt it to the needs and goals of your own community, but I'm happy to pass along some language.
You'd be so kind.
Although I do think your ordinance is pretty good.
Yeah, I think it's pretty good, but, you know, we, we want to be, we want to try to cover ourselves. And like Tommy says, you know, we want to be in that what happens. What happens when, you know, if something goes wrong? It's just, I know we may, you know, I know you can't cover everything, but you need to try to cover especially that part of it when a company fails. We don't want the taxpayer having to foot that bill. And after the landowner has reaped the benefits of it.
I don't think that landowner wants to pay for any decommissioning himself or herself either. I mean, what, decommissioning language typically involves a power company returning the land to its original state or better. And, you know, I grew up in scouts and leave no trace is a huge principle that we live by. And I think it should be the same scenario here. I understand what if a company goes bankrupt? What if, you know, a huge disaster happens and the scenario where a county might be left high and dry? But there are 50 other counties who are thinking the same thoughts you have and they have arrived at different conclusions where they feel sufficiently protected. It's probably lower risk doing nothing, but we have to be doing something. So what is the best way to move the needle forward, address those concerns, protect the county sufficiently, ask for that money upfront in a decommissioning bond? That's the, that's the key.
Yeah, well, that's right. But, you know, enforcing the ordinance, if the company doesn't follow through with the ordinance, I guess your only way to enforce it is through the court system and we, and we know how long that takes. And you know where that usually ends up. We have a very large bill and we still haven't gotten anything done.
The companies that made mistakes early on are well-known. And it is harder for them to do business if they made mistakes, so it is in their best interest not to. And to make sure everybody is happy, to make sure you all are happy, to make sure your neighbors are happy. The Essex example, it's talked about all the time. In central Virginia, there's a county in Louisa, or county called Louisa that had a runoff issue that's talked about all the time. In Mecklenburg County, there is a project that has view shed and runoff issues. And Mecklenburg County is not going to permit another one until they're sufficiently convinced that those original problems will not, will not happen. We get it. That's the nature of business and that's the nature of local politics. We're doing our part to talk about that upfront, talk about it early, share best practices and make these projects the best neighbors possible. It is not going to help anybody to see, you know, projects with rampant runoff, stormwater, erosion, view shed concerns everywhere. It's going to be much harder for the next guy. And it doesn't make the landowner or the county look good in the process, so...
No, it does not. Anyone else have any questions?
No, the only comment I would have is a lot of companies and businesses were thought to be very wise and everything, then they failed. That's why we have a super fund, too, for sites that are terrible situations. And taxpayers in the whole country are paying for these super fund sites. One of them was up there in West Mullen. When they had situations when so real bad. And again, we're dealing such, in one sense, solar is in its infancy because nobody has done a decommissioning. And that's the real concern is, I mean, even, I haven't heard anything about California that's mentioned decommissioning of a total project. I mean, they replaced some panels, but the whole project, that's the, at the end, the end of life, useful life, which they, you're right. They're going to have a certain amount of energy that can be produced, but it's not if their curve of cost then goes too high for 80% panel versus 100%. So, but that's, the real concern is at the end of life, especially when I won't be around.
Yep, I understand. Well, gentlemen, thank you so much. We'll make sure to leave cards and anything that we can do. Always happy to make the trip up 360. Thank you for having us. It's a real privilege to talk to you.
Enjoy seeing the sheep when you come up and down the road, too.
Next time I come, I'm going to bring a solar grazer with me and you can ask him questions about a sheep flock. We call him a solar shepherd.
Scott, Jacob, we really do appreciate you coming by and giving us this information. It's been very interesting.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Scott, can we get you all to email us the documents and links or what you all are trying to show so we can pay it as a resource?
I'd be happy to, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.